Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry for the delay. We've been up in the attic with the structural engineer with concerns of the snow and ice up on the roof. The 6:30 meeting is going to start now at 7:15. And it was, the agenda was to discuss priorities for town's budget needs. And this is, the newest priority is the roof. So we have with us the structural engineer. And we just came down from the attic, both attics. And so Charles, if you wouldn't mind just telling us what you believe we need to do to correct the issue at this time.
Thank you. My name is Charles Sacra. And I was called to come to the, see the building after my previous colleague came and seen it by Tom Donaldson of the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency. So after I heard the description, I thought it was something that we need to look at urgently. And I came the same day I heard about it. What I observed and heard also my colleagues explain to me what they think they have observed, it was for us as engineers, a way, a second opinion. Let's have a second opinion for internally and offer it to the client. In that case, we are not pursuing the work that we have done for the town, but we are representing the insurance company who told us to come, who told me to come and give another opinion. So it's with pleasure and professionalism that I'm offering what I observed. First, I thank Helen for all the help and all the help of Steve, Colonel Crivello, and the other, Lincoln and others, for guiding me through and showing me around. The most important, what I have observed in the space, attic space over the meeting hall, the hall itself. What we have observed as deflection of the ceiling is real. It is the result of the, one of the central trusses that is not carrying the roof per se, part of the roof. But it's mainly built to carry the ceiling and the insulation. Well, even if that truss fails, it could bring down the whole ceiling and cause a deterioration of bringing down certain areas of the roof also. We looked at the ends of the truss and we saw it's difficult to really touch it. We were, Steve and myself, like cats under the timber, trying to figure out what's happening there. It looks like there have been some recent wind, not wind, timber deterioration. We couldn't go closer and look around as we should. Then, excuse me, that truss is not a typical truss that you see where you see diagonals and vertical elements. You see two timber pieces with a flat timber piece in the middle. If the span is 60 feet, you could say it's divided in three, 20, 20, 20, 20, 20, and 20. With two steel rods or iron rods tying the top to another piece of timber at the bottom. This is not a truss. A truss would have, these, the vertical pieces are called in our terms tension members. That is, if you compress them, they deflect. It's, if you compress the sheet, it becomes, but if you tear it like that, it remains stable. So this truss at both ends have moved. I don't want to enter into the reasons before I open it and look at it from under. That could be, thank you, that could be the cause for the movement that you have witnessed and what you may have heard from timber noises. The other thing that we observed, the roof, what is supporting the roof, two pieces of timber nailed to a horizontal at the crest of the trusses. Notice that this piece is not bonded together to the middle piece of timber. There's some space, which means that the nails are not keeping the thing together. Some movement has happened. Doesn't seem to be recent, but it could be. Some areas appear whiter than others, indicating fresh timber. But it could be also triggered by that middle truss that moved out of position. And since it carries some load, it could have triggered movement of the walls. What is the reason for that? We have not seen all the facts. But there's something that, if we look at probabilities of failure here, it's not something imminent that would likely to happen. But it's certainly, not a certainty. So how to limit the probability of failure temporarily until a more permanent solution is found? My recommendation would be to shore at four points this middle truss that caused movement and that is deflecting. And if we are shoring, it's not very heavy loads that we are carrying down to the ground. Because if you shore it to the lower floor, then the lower floor may not be able to support it. So my recommendation would be this as a first option. That would limit immensely the probability of failure. The second recommendation would be on the roof, it is true that I'm told that there is a foot, a foot and a half. Well, eliminating any additional load would also reduce any risk of failure. So these are the two easy things to do that could be done immediately. We noticed on the ceiling floor, that is, that there are men, pieces of timber that were added subsequently to the construction. Now, the roof that is being carried is based on different inverted V shapes that are at two or two foot or one foot eight inch, one foot nine inches, one foot six inches spacing. This system of V under load tends to open under, when you push, tends to open. So it must have opened either after the fire or I'm told maybe before the fire, possibly. So what they did, those who looked into a solution to stabilize it, they took a piece of timber at the bottom and nailed it at the ends continuously. So now, if it's trying to fail and keep falling like that, it's not going to be able to do it. So it's a smart solution. This is only on half the roof, on one side of the main truss. On the other side, there is nothing. But still, the phenomenon of opening at the top is visible on the other side. So as a potential addition, we could add the same thing, simple horizontal timbers that tie one end to the other. So we stabilize it from opening up further and opening, taking the wall with it. So I think these are three things. The first two could be easily done. And the third one, something to add to also minimize risk on the roof until you, other options are looked more in depth in your future planning of the, of the hall.
All right. Okay, so, so at this point, I think you'll report to the insurance company for us. And then we'll have to get, you know, the temporary fix design and have somebody, a shoring company come in and get started on it.
Helen told me that Isaac Blair looked at it.
Yep.
We, Isaac Blair do a lot of work to Maya. They are very reliable, very professional. I talked to Tom Donaldson, the representative. And I was explaining with Maya, we have had 10 years of experience, almost, I would say, 350 to 400 assignments in these last 10 years. We worked extensively sometimes with Isaac Blair. We worked with, with other subcontractors. Sometimes we go for mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire. And, and sometimes trusses move. I was explaining that the town that is after Sturbridge, the name is skipping me now, they usually make a book or a market for old things to be sold. Their town hall.
Brimfield.
Brimfield, bravo, yes. Town hall there, yeah. We investigated it. It's a beautiful town hall. And one of the trusses, main trusses, suddenly went down a few inches and they got scared. It was something scary. So when we investigated that piece of truss, the timber had rotten at the base. And it fell. But it didn't go down. It was still supported. And when we looked at it, also, it could go down further because other tim, pieces of timber were rotten. But what I noticed, that the floor of the ceiling, contrary to yours, had a whole, you know, maybe, I don't know how many, I would say, thousands of pounds of books and documents, which was really scary. That was the big danger there, that this could have resulted in a, something very serious. But immediately, we did the shoring. We removed the books, you know, that is, these ceilings are not designed to carry things. They are designed probably for what you have, for a person like me or somebody else walking between the pieces of timber, on the pieces of timber, rather than on the ceiling itself. And so these things, we deal with these issues. And first thing is securing, limiting potential failure. And I think this is what we can do here until we could find other options. This will allow you to feel at peace, hopefully, with the solution.
And as we discussed briefly, we did have a shoring contractor here on Friday. There seemed to be some conflicting thoughts about the shoring towers. So perhaps you could speak directly with the shoring contractor?
I would speak with Tom.
Okay.
And if he wants Isaac Blair, we'll deal with Isaac Blair ourselves.
Okay.
It'll be our own responsibility.
Beautiful.
We're not carrying the whole building. We are carrying a piece of the building.
Correct. And how long will that, those temporary towers, how much time does that buy us? Months or years or weeks?
Oh, no, these, you know, they are there, they are solid, they are.
Years.
Yeah.
Okay.
Years. And you also recommend that we remove the snow from the roof?
This is an additional factor.
Yeah.
That could help stab, eliminate another risk that could be there. It's unloading what caused the thing.
But it would help. But you think it would help?
It would help.
Because it doesn't look like the snow's gonna be melting shortly.
I know, unfortunately.
It might be worth.
And even if it does melt, you don't want it up there.
Right.
The weight of it alone.
Yeah. So we should, we should look into a snow removal, roofs, roofers, or somebody that can do it.
If we were to put a timeline on progress toward the temporary measures, when do you think we could hear back from Mr. Donaldson?
Oh, Tom?
Yes.
I'm going to call him tonight. No, Tom is a, Tom is with, I think, 300 towns and never heard any, any.
Please.
Oh, he is, if you are worried, he is much more worried than you are.
Yeah, he's great. He's, he's very, very good to work with.
And we have enjoyed 10 years with him.
Okay.
Very good. Well, we thank you very much. I appreciate that you came out.
We have one question, Mr. Barret.
What's your opinion about the new cracks in the walls? It seems to me that his approach is great. We're addressing immediate concern, but the, the spreading of the walls and the new cracking in the walls is pretty disconcerting to me. I'm wondering if when that thing fell, it might have pushed out on the wall, but there are new, were the cracks in the walls.
When I looked outside, I didn't see these cracks.
The walls.
I looked before entering because my colleagues told me, look, check if there are, the walls are bowing the outside. Now, looking at it visually, I may not be able to distinguish necessarily a bone of the wall, but I didn't see cracks. And I was specifically looking for cracks because a crack could signal particularly at the corners.
Do they think the craters are sitting on an interior wooden partition or are they sitting on the brick wall?
I think they are sitting on the brick wall.
So the long-term solution is a little bit more than dealing with the truss?
Yes.
I guess that's the point I'm getting at.
The pieces of timber that I, that are burnt, I touched them. Some of them could crumble even under a touch, you know. But it lasted. I mean, those who put these horizontal ties, we call them, they put one in the middle of the V and one at the bottom, which was very smart. So they tied it together. It, they prevented the, the V to open up further and create a hole. I thought it was very creative, very efficient, and.
Certainly the only reason it's still standing.
Yeah, I agree.
And I, Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out, it's yet to be determined whether the insurance company is covering this, if they will accept it as a claim, or if this is something that they're going to consider part of a pre-existing condition. So I just want the board to be cognizant of the fact that we, we do not have certainty yet as to whether this is a covered situation.
We'll give them permission to cover it.
Yeah.
All right. Well, nevertheless, it's gotta get done.
Absolutely.
For safety reasons.
And we will alert the finance committee that we may likely be submitting a reserve fund transfer.
Yep. You hear that, Rich? All right, well.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. You want to take a temporary five-minute recess before we open the seven or?
Sure, we can. Anybody come to the planning board here?
At the ask-to-table.
Oh, yeah, they're not gonna be up to you again. All right, welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. If we could all stand and join us in a crosstalk.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any announcements this evening, except there's no blizzard scheduled for this week. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes and warrant, or just minutes tonight, I think, right?
Correct.
Minutes for January 20th at 5:30 PM. The only one absent was John. Motion to accept.
Motion to accept the minutes of January 20th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have minutes for the January 20th, 20th, 7:00 PM meeting. And John was the only one absent.
Motion to approve the minutes of January 20th at 7:00 PM.
So, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have town, reports of the town officials, which was scheduled to be the planning board, but they asked to table it to our next meeting for carriage tour states. So next, we'll have the first public forum. Nobody. Correspondence, Charter TV. The only thing I really have is Charter TV changed and added a few channels to our lineup. So, and if you check your guide channel, you'll find them all there. Couple of HD channels and a couple of sporting channels. And that's it for correspondence. Next, we have appointments and resignations. We have the Green Community Committee. There's two appointments.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to make two appointments to the Green Community Committee. The first one being Keith Boomer. He indicated an interest, and I have an email from him indicating that he would like to participate in green energy. He's particularly interested in alternative energy sources. He's a, he works for GE. He's a, basically a programmer and a field evaluation engineer. So he has a technical background. So I make a motion that you can consider the appointment of Keith Boomer. And then the second appointment I had, I also have a, an email from him, and that's Chris Capazoli. Chris is, is an independent businessman. He's a water conditioner contractor. And he's a bit technical, and he also has an interest in assisting with green energy. So I would ask the board to entertain a motion to appoint these two individuals to the Green Community Committee.
Do we have a second, someone? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next, we have the Assistant Animal Control Officer resignation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we don't have that in writing. The gentleman did come in and speak one-on-one with the Assistant Town Clerk and turned in his keys and his, his equipment.
Okay.
So it was an implied resignation, unfortunately not in writing.
Okay.
So I would be seeking an acceptance of that from the board.
Okay.
Accept the resignation of the Assistant.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have one comment on that. A gentleman by the name, I happened to be in a police station one day, and a gentleman by the name of Jason Berthlet from Berthlet Way indicated that he'd be willing to fill in as, if, you know, town needed. He's a police officer in the, in the town of Wensaka. He's a detective on the night shift, but he's available days. And if we need any assistance in that regard, I don't know if the chief would like to comment on that.
I did, the chief did send that resume over to me, I think on Thursday. I just haven't, quite frankly, with the issues with this building, haven't had the opportunity to telephone the gentleman and speak about the position at all. But we will certainly look into that. And, you know, if, if he can't do it on a more permanent basis, we'll, we can post the position again.
All right.
Good.
Thank you. Next, we have an appointment for the Police Department. Dear Chairman Barrett, I respectfully request the Millville Board of Selectmen appoint Michael DeRosa as a part-time Millville Police Officer at the February 17th Selectmen's Meeting. Mike is a graduate of the Massachusetts Reserve Police Academy and has, and has his first responder EMT and CPR certifications and will be an asset to this town. Sincerely, Ronald S. Landry, Chief of Police.
Motion to.
And this is until?
June 30th, 2015.
This year.
Correct, yes.
Okay. So all in favor?
I will.
You second?
I will.
You seconded? Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the license agreement for the new polling location, which, which we've been looking into at the St. Augustine's Parish.
Skip over Helen.
I did?
Nothing to say.
Did I?
Nothing going on?
You got any?
Nothing.
Nothing, right? I'm sorry, all right, active executive secretary. How'd that happen? That's always the most exciting part of a meeting.
Of course, the board members are, have been kept abreast to the situation via email. But for the public watching and those in the audience, we did have a rather serious situation with the town hall building over the weekend, beginning on Friday. We had no heat in the building, which caused a loss of water to both the Police Department and the town hall because we are on a shared well. I'm not going to go through all the details, but 72 hours later, we do have our heat back on, water has been restored, and I'm happy to report that we suffered very limited damage to the pipes and bursting of the pipes. We've got a couple of very small issues that a plumber will be addressing at 7:00 AM tomorrow. But that is the reason why the building was closed today. The heat just came on later yesterday. So during the tharring process, we didn't know what we were going to be facing as far as pipes bursting. So we've addressed that issue. We did have some issues. I tend to think because of the severity of the temperatures in the building, we had some issues with our server, our main server. We had our IT people come out. They will be addressing those. There is a part that is needed that will be hopefully replaced this week. So the server, as of right now, is running, but it's kind of a come-and-go issue. And lastly, as you all know, we've had some concerns about the roof and the ceiling in the classroom on the second floor. Because we know that there will be some work done up there, we did have all of the historical pictures and items that were in that room relocated within the town hall. We were in contract, in contact with the Historical Commission. Ms. Carroll and Mr. Berthlet was good enough to come in and remove his diorama and bring that back to his house to avoid that from any damage. So those are just a few things we've dealt with just this weekend. We appreciate everybody's patience. Chief's been great, Steve. We've had a lot of people helping us out, the officers who checked the building for us. We greatly appreciate their assistance. And one other thing, the Municipal Center Building Committee, as you know, Mrs. Wing asks often, we do have the final report. A copy of that has been given to all of the selectmen for review. The, the committee met last week. And what they decided is before they prepare their final recommendation to the board, they would like to meet with you all briefly and give you the opportunity to ask questions and, you know, hear your comments before they present their final recommendation. So they would like to do that if you're available before the next meeting on March 2nd at 6:30.
Okay.
If that works for you.
I'm good.
Okay.
At 6:30?
6:30 on March 2nd.
After my day evening.
So if you could, you know, take a quick look at that report and just have your questions ready that night, they'll be happy to address those for you. And then shortly thereafter, they will come to a meeting and present their final recommendation. Which, as we know, after tonight is, we need to get that done sooner rather than later, so.
Over the weekend, as I was watching.
Over the weekend, as I was watching emails going back and forth on the situation here, I thought about that, and instead of just taking the questions that night, we'll have the draft recommendations for you to review.
Okay.
We can't really drag this out much further because of what's been going on with the building.
Yeah.
So, we'll have those for you. Uh, once your questions are in, we'll make adjustments and get those back. And then they will plot our way ahead.
Sure.
So, it'll be more than just the questions that night.
Yeah, okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Okay, uh, and on that note, Helen, after this weekend, I just want to thank you for all, on behalf of the whole town, for every time there's a disaster, it's not in your job description, but you, you grab the reins and you, and you, and you take control and, um, Renata H. V. A. C., talked to them today, uh, the gentleman that, and he's, he was very happy with, with all the help and the professionalism from Millville. So, um, I just want that to be known, that it's most appreciated.
The town of Millville is very fortunate in that the vendors, we do use, uh, Renault H. V. A. C. and, um, the plumber in town, Jason Rabbits, um, Richardson Well and Pump, they were all, as soon as we called, they were here. Um, they were all very, very good, very professional, and, um, came here in a very timely, timely manner. Unfortunately, because our heating system is so old, as you know, Mr. Barrett, it, finding parts for it is not an easy task. And with the weather Saturday, we were in the middle of a blizzard, um, but they really, they went out of their way to get the parts, and they got here and they fixed it as quickly as they could, so, you know, we're, we're very fortunate.
So, anyway, so thank you for all your...
No, no problem.
...extra work this weekend. And, um, that's it for that. Now, now to the old business. Uh, the polling location license agreement.
Yep, if the board recalls, um, at one of the last meetings, you did vote to authorize me to, um, forward this to the church for their review. This is a, a simple agreement that we asked our town council to draft. Um, the church representative did sign it. They didn't have any issues or concerns with it. So, um, the way town council prepared it is for my signature, um, so I would just be looking for the, uh, the board's vote to authorize me to sign on behalf of the board. Um, and once we get this signed, we will then start the process of notifying the residents that our polling location has changed. I've spoken with the town clerk about getting some additional signage that we'll put at the foot of the, the drive at the church, so people know that the location has changed. But that will be, for the, the first time, will be the annual election in April.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay. All right. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, next we have, on old business, is the goal-setting mission statement. Joe?
Okay. I did receive, uh, a statement from, uh, Mr. Baker as well as from the chairman.
Did you get mine?
Yeah, you sent it. No, you told me, you said you sent it.
Yeah, no.
Do you have it?
I have a copy I came from, yeah. That's okay.
I, uh... I kinda liked, uh, what Mr. Baker wrote. In that, uh, it seems like it's an all-in-one statement. I changed the, the words around a little bit. I'll read it, and I'll, I came early enough, I shouldn't make copies of it to, to share with you, but I'll read it and, and send copies electronically.
Yeah, we all got it on our emails from Mr. Baker.
Okay.
You're saying... So, you, you reworded a little, so...
Yeah, it, it shall be the goal of the Board of Selectmen to meet town resident needs by ensuring public safety, encouraging recreational and cultural activity, supporting the school district, and focusing resource on commercial development to ensure Millville's future viability while striving for the highest quality of life for all its citizens. I... There isn't much that I, I changed, but I just tried to make it flow a little bit better. And, uh, I, I would welcome comments, um, from the board when they get a chance to, to look at it. I'll send this out.
Okay.
And hopefully, we can finalize it. Uh, I, I think that statement, um... identifies a mission, it has a goal, and it has vision, so we don't have to do anything more.
Right. Except...
Okay, now...
Except what? Talking to the top, right?
The, uh, but I think as far as the goal-setting process, the, the onerous responsibility we have right now, it's a number-one goal, and that's housing of town government.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So, that's it for goal-setting. But I also want to, uh, compliment the, uh, Finance Committee. They have a set of eight goals, which kind of fits into all of this because it, it supports this, this statement as well, in terms of the fiscal responsibility and the goals that they've established. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Joe, I also, um, I'd like to see me, obviously not this year, but in future years, um, our mission and our goals will be directly reported within the town's report.
That, that's an excellent point. I, uh, I noticed that, uh, Mr. Laura brought along his selectments. And it, it, basically, the two things that it says is that, uh, you, you need to involve all town departments in, in a goal-setting process. And the other thing is to more frequently, uh, bring in your, your state and local representative for meetings with the board. This is, this is, this is great reading. Thank you, John.
Anything else, Joe? All right. Next, uh, we have, uh, new business. We have the overspend the snow budget. So, uh, please be advised that, that a vote by the Board of Health, Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee is required to authorize snow and ice emergency expenditures in excess of appropriation as provided by Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection thirty-one D. As of this date, the account is at a deficit of forty-seven thousand dollars, not including the last large storm. And this was dated February eleventh. So, um, that's something we need to vote on, too.
And the Finance Committee did already vote on this at their last meeting.
Okay, so, do we have a motion?
Motion, motion to overspend the snow and ice budget.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Just a comment, is there a rough idea where we might end up if we have another one of these storms?
I do not know. I, I, perhaps the Highway Surveyor knows the, the bills. I haven't seen the, the invoices yet. I'm not sure if they've been submitted for the past.
So, that would be the poorhouse.
As of September, we were out again, so...
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a daily ongoing...
Last, last year, we expended roughly two-hundred-and-eighty-four grand on snow and ice removal.
And that's not, you have to also take into account not just your storms, but when the melting starts and then the freezing at night.
Mm-hmm.
And that sanding going on, we're gonna...
Yeah, like this we, this weekend, it's gonna be thirty-something on Sunday and then drop down to the teens at night, so there'll be...
There's some hotspots in town that always need sanding, so... No, I believe, um, I believe M E. M. A. has come out with, they're gonna do some funding. I think, um, the Emergency Management Director said he spoke with you.
Uh, yeah, we, uh, actually, for the blizzard, we submitted, uh, following Friday, we submitted all our expenditures, um, from sand salt, um, extra hours for our labor, um, contractors' bills. They all got put in for, we picked a, uh, forty-eight-hour window, that's what they allow, so we picked that and we put it in. M E. M. A. along with S. D. O. T. has been out, uh, you've seen on the road, uh, trucking and extra front-end loaders. That's all from the state, uh, they gave it to us. It's not at our expense. Um, so, you know, they're, they're working on getting back here, but they deployed everybody, to my, um, knowledge, they deployed them all to the M. D. T. A. in Boston. Um, they, they said they're gonna come back, and if they do come back, my hope is to send them, I was hoping to have it this week, 'cause it would've been really good, but I was gonna take the snow off of Thirsty. Um, just because, you know, it's one of the hotspots where I get a lot of people, you know, the road's narrow and, and the buses going up there.
There's actually a name for that now. I saw it on the news. It's called Snow Rage.
Snow Rage, I was, yeah, it's out there.
Yeah.
I know Chief Landry, uh, dealt with that last week a little bit, yeah. So, hopefully, we will be getting some money back from, from the state, too, for...
There's a possibility that we might get something back from federal if we declared a disaster area.
Yeah, that could be several weeks before we have any answer.
Kind of based on the numbers that go into the local F E. M. A. and then they determine nationally. It's just good that it was called early. You know, Governor Baker called it very early so that you could cash in on that forty-eight hours as soon as possible, so, that's good.
Okay, good, great. All right, next, we have the Members' Forum. We have, uh, Mr. Reposa has the highway, highway snow, and I have the, uh, warrant. Joe, you wanna do the, the thing I have on warrants first? That's gonna take thirty seconds.
Sure.
And then we'll go to the highway?
Sure.
So, what I brought, I want the warrants on is just to remind, um, the, the board how important it is to hurry up and when, when Marcia calls us to sign the warrants, just to get, they gotta be done by early A. M. on, on Wednesdays so that Lisa and Marcia can process all the vendor bills and payroll, which is even more important than the vendors. And, um, just so, you know, I mean, if, if we can't send out payroll, there'll be some issues. You know, the vendors don't mind waiting, right, Brad?
Yeah.
But, uh, anyway, so, just, just to remind us all how important it is to, uh, make every effort to get down here and just sign the warrants so that the girls can keep moving. So, that was it.
Okay, uh, this, uh... My subject is that just hanging around town, being a retired guy, I hear a lot of things from a lot of people, but, uh, the, the one concern that I, I do have is the, the instruction or the understanding between highway and, and town government in dealing with snow and ice. What, what are the protocols? It appears that there are communications breakdowns or misunderstandings between individuals, and I would really like to see, um, you know, a protocol or a procedure established so that we can avoid these, these issues. So, what is our responsibility is, uh, the policymakers of the town versus an elected official. Where's the control? Where's, uh, where's the, uh, I. C. S., Incident Control System?
Command.
Command system.
Chief Landry knows all about that.
Yep.
So, uh, we spoke with, uh, Mr. Malali this, this weekend, uh, in one of those tough situations, and, um, and I invite him up if he'd like to, to, to speak a little and see if we can clear up some, some misunderstandings.
Brian, you might want to pull the mic over a little bit.
Well, I'd just like some clarification. Um, as you all received the same email that I have, um, that there were numerous complaints made, um, about the, uh, town properties and how they're being maintained, um, the snow plowing, um, that I oversee. Uh, we have the contractor, uh, who is here tonight also, um, who has the snow plowing contract for Millville, um, that we do assist him with our town vehicles. A lot of, um, questions about what are, here going forward, how we're going to react with the town properties, and where are all the complaints?
Well, I, I believe, uh, part of the confusion is who's, who's responsible for sidewalks and, and doorways, you know, especially emergency egress doors.
I'm, I'm, I, I...
Even, even if a door is not used, like, these two doors are our main doors, but we have emergency egress doors as well that all need, need shoveled.
Correct.
And who's responsible? Well, I, the contract says, may I see this? May I see that, Joe?
I think what you...
Back up for a minute here because...
Well...
I, I, I mean, I, I can lay it right out on the table.
Right, but what...
We don't have, we do not have the manpower to be maintaining all of the walkways, um, consistently, uh, constantly during a snow event.
Oh, I know, well, during a snow event, the town halls normally close anyway, but before the next business day...
Correct, but I don't want it to be closed because of the Highway Department.
Well...
And I don't want it to be, be sad because the Highway Department, uh, couldn't, couldn't maintain it.
You gotta take care of first line of defense.
Correct.
There's three things. Plain and simple. Police Department, Fire Department, Town Hall, 'cause M E. M. A. is in here. Okay?
Yep.
All right. That's your first line of defense. Okay, 'cause you gotta have public safety, be able to help the people.
As long as we get a call soon enough, our first concern is the main arteries, the main arteries of Mill...
You still gotta take care of the first line of defense.
And then it works its way in...
The Police Department, the Fire Department can't get out.
Correct.
We're in trouble.
And, but have they not been able to get out?
Well, I've heard they, they had issues with this not being plowed out, and it was safety issues. Okay, so what I'm saying is, first line of defense, we have to make sure this is taken care of.
Where are the complaints?
I'll comment, um...
Fine, comment.
In regards to the police problem, the parking lot in the back, um, Brian has been very receptive when I called him to plow. But you know what? It's not my job to call him every time the parking lot needs plowed. We went ten hours last storm on the twenty-seventh, and there was six inches, seven inches of snow in the parking lot. So, if there's seven inches of snow in the streets, there's seven inches of snow in my parking lot, we gotta stop twice. Now, I understand Brian says, well, call him. Well, I can't babysit the Police Department and Fire Department twenty-four-seven, wondering if they were plowed, especially when I'm not on duty. That's what probably irritates me the most. Sergeant Cooper's spoken to me, he's told me he's made numerous calls in the past as well. That's not our job. It's not my job to make sure the Police Department or the Fire Department's lots are plowed, whether it's the private contractor or the town trucks. That's between these two gentlemen and not me. Now, Brian, we, we've called Brian. I called Brian, I have to have, but I, it's not my job to call Brian. I'm worried about the Fire Department and the Police Department, not the snow. So, whatever missed connection we have here going on, it has to stop. Last week, I had a mound of snow in front of the garage doors. I thought it was hazard, both police and fire.
And what happened?
I called the Highway Surveyor, who refused to come down and remove that storm.
After I received an email, not to, after I received an email, not to touch town property.
But it doesn't matter to me...
We can talk, but let him finish.
It doesn't matter to me who's sending out emails, who's speaking to somebody, who's communicating with anybody. I worry about public safety. So, when the police chief calls and I can't get my lot plowed, I have a problem with that. And that, that didn't make sense. Whatever the disconnect is between these two gentlemen, I should not be a victim of it. And I was. And it was so, so unprofessional, Brian, for you to tell me, no, I can't do it.
Why would you tell me that when I, when we...
You told me you couldn't do it right on the phone.
That's right, you received the same email I got. Not to do it. And you said to me, you know, you're in a hard spot.
I said, I, that's right, I'm in a hard spot between you, this gentleman and Helen. And it's not my job to be in this difficult spot. I just want the snow plowed from the parking lot without having to call you every time this snow accumulates.
And you're right.
And I can see here and see your trucks or Brad's trucks go by twenty, thirty times. You're telling me they can't pull in and make a pass? When I can push my two cruisers, cause they can't move, I, that doesn't make sense. So whatever disconnect there is, it has to be taken care of.
You are a hundred percent, you're a hundred percent
I'm not gonna be in with this, but it's not my job to call you and tell you that my lot needs to be plowed, or Brad, or Helen. I'm a police fire chief, not the Highway Survey. And I don't think it should be my role unless you're gonna instruct me to make each phone call.
No, but if you do come in here and you see that, you know, I don't like you, might need a little more attention. It's only working together and helping each other if you do pick up the phone.
We've done that.
You have.
Why you call me?
And that's why we're working together.
Right.
But when it comes back to, I wanna go back to the snowplow. You had the email days before. I was told not to. You even told me on the phone, you you know that you were supposed to call the Executive Secretary to get it taken care of.
I just
I wanted to do it. I had two front end loaders and two dump trucks, three dump trucks out on the street.
This sounds like kindergarten. This sounds like kindergarten. When a Highway Survey
You're right it does.
Will not come out and be plowing a public safety lot.
It wasn't
I didn't care less about the email.
Wait, Alex, that's right.
Where a public truck cannot cannot make this current job. And I didn't worry about that. I didn't worry about finding
I agreed with you.
That's all I'm saying.
I wanted to have
I don't wanna get between these two. It's not my job to get between highway and Brad. My job is to make sure we can respond to calls and leave the fire station. And that's not only the case.
And you have been able to.
When I make the phone call, let's go back to that. When I make the phone calls, is that not true, Brian?
Not true.
How many times have I called regarding snow with Sergeant Cooper or called Brad?
I I've probably had
There shouldn't be any, there shouldn't be any calls. If there's ten inches of snow on the street
You just agree with me, it's working together.
I'd like to ask a question. Outside of these past storms we've had, in previous years, have any of, has any of this ever been an issue? That you know of, Brad, that you know of, that Helen knows of, or the chief?
For the past four years, I've gotten phone calls.
We always call, that's consistent.
Can you can you come in and do it? We've moved the cards. Well, there's a little more than, uh we're having a hard time getting up the hill at Fletcher Street. I I mean we we can't be everywhere at once, but yes, public safety is first.
Okay, so a a second question is, Brad, within, and and Brian, within our contract, it includes declaring of town lots?
Correct.
And do you have like a system or a person on route who does this?
I believe, and I have not, we have not been able to sit down yet um since this has happened. And I believe I have I have the answer for it um and it's not what we have, aside from the sidewalks. Um but I would like the time to be able to sit down with the contractor, because I do oversee him and go over it with him and put the game plan together. I'm not happy with working with, I don't want the chief to call me and say, move my pile of snow. And I have to say, call the Executive Secretary, cause you get the same email. Or we're starting to get a blizzard and I call the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, because I'm trying to get some rest before we go out. And my mind's starting to spin and I start saying, well, how's Helen defining snow removal? Because snow removal can be taken many ways. Is it the removal from the parking lot or is it, you know, plowing and everything? So are we supposed to be plowing the lot? So I pick up the phone and I call you. You you were out that night. I went down the line. I called Joe. I got Joe. Joe couldn't answer me, cause he wasn't sure of the question I was asking. He called Helen, as far as I know, called me back, told me, by all means, you don't need to touch them for this storm. We will work this out. Come to the meeting. And that's what I wanna do. I don't want, you know, if there's a separate contract for the town properties, I don't wanna see the same contractor putting a truck that's on the road to come in here to build the town hall. I mean, it's just, it's not gonna work that way.
A double dipping.
It's not, not the double dipping part of it.
It's in the contract, you're supposed to do it, and then you're gonna pay, we're gonna pay another outside company.
I just don't wanna have to, I don't wanna have to fleece that part of it.
Do we have on file for the library, the senior center, the town hall, the police, all of our town buildings? I know it's in the contract. Do we have from each of those persons in charge of the facility, what does snow removal look like at their building? So the senior center might say, we need this door, this door. Do we have a list of the things that need to be done at each building? Cause I think that might be a first step. And I have to say, and I've had a conver, I I've had a conversation with you um on the phone about this and I was, you know, cause I I emailed Helen and said, you know, I think the storms have been precedent setting. And we also have to look at the fact that years passed, the highway did not do it. It came later. When I was on the board, we used to have the the maintenance person who was here, did it in the morning. Mr. Grable did it. Mr. Height did it at one point. Um and how things evolved to save money. And then in our conversation, it hit me, Jonathan used to come down and do this. Well, Jonathan is now in a plow truck, which didn't exist four years ago. You know, so Jonathan drove around, shov, helped shovel out, whatever, did this, did that. Now we're putting him in a truck with a sander and a plow. So the dynamics of the highway has changed, the town's needs have changed, cause of cost measures. And I think if, to work successfully, I think we need a list from each facility, what needs to be done. And then figuring out if it can be done by them or if each person needs, they should not have to hire a plow. It's in there, it should be done, and that's it, it should be part of the rule. But as far as a shovel, I think we might have to hire someone to be a shovel person to come dig out this, dig out the walkways, use the snow blowers. I don't know, but I think we need to see what's needed at each building to even know if we
Well, the issue right now isn't what doors at each building need to be done. They all need to be done. All sidewalks need to be done. It says right here, all roads, okay? Town-accepted roads, sidewalks, in the town of Millville, as well as various municipal parking lots, as determined by the Highway Survey. Well, we're saying it right now, it's every parking lot we own, every sidewalk we own, and every emergency egress door that we own on this, in this town, needs to be done. Certain ones need to be done during the storm, throughout the storm, fire, police, and the Mema. After that, the storm's over. Before, you know, we gotta, when we know that the town hall is opening, which unfortunately always snows on a school night. So we know the town hall needs to open, well, then in the morning, we gotta, we gotta make it safe for these ladies and and gentlemen to come to work. It just needs to be done. It doesn't make sense to have this contractor to do all the, it's spelt out right here, and then hire the same contractor
No.
As the town hall, the town hall shouldn't have to hire another contractor or the same contractor to do something that he's already, he's basically being paid to do it, cause he works by the hour. We have a contract of labor and equipment costs per hour with each different type of equipment. And it's to my understanding that Mr. LaFontaine has a um quite a a a impressive snow blower
How many times did he take that out?
That he hasn't used.
We haven't taken it out, have we?
If Jonathan can't shovel anymore because he's in the truck, which is fine, cause that was the intent of having the truck with a sn, with a plow and a sander. Um then if Mr. LaFontaine has to hire another person to operate the snow blower uh to get these thing, these issues done and make everything safe. I mean, we gotta have safe roads to drive on, but well, there's also pedestrians that need to walk safe. I know in most other towns, don't do this sidewalks till the snow's done and the roads are done. But they still need to be done and um I would have to say that the town hall opening for business would be the first priority. And then, you know, your senior center and your library.
And that's how we've done it. I mean, we 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 do, we do come here at eight o'clock in the morning.
Yep.
And we we would open up the two main entrances as we would shovel. The town hall was closed the other day. We sent and and we have, I know Helen has a staff. Uh we sent somebody over here to open up the entrances with the shovel. He got here, they were, they were already being done. Great. Uh I drove in one of the town employees. To my knowledge, Chief Landry drove in the other. They were able to access the building. The next morning, the same thing. Sent somebody over here at eight o'clock to start shoveling, to open up. They were already being done. Great.
Brian, who's doing them?
Um you're, I don't know what
Yeah, we've just got, we've just got a part-timer here for the next couple of weeks.
No, Taylor was doing it.
Yeah, he's just a, he's just a temporary part-timer. But that's just the past couple of, that's just the past couple
No, I'm just saying
He shovels out, I don't know who
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
We would start here at the town hall and then we would move on, by all means. I knew the town hall wasn't open on a Friday. We didn't come here Friday morning at eight o'clock.
Right.
If if it was snowing or a Saturday.
Right.
After the storm, we'd come in. Um if we were getting that much during the blizzard, we did come in here twice and shoveled the walkways.
Yeah, but for our understanding, our understanding, Brian, is that Helen had asked the contractors, now we gotta pay him over and beyond. I'm not good with that. Why should we pay him? It's in the contract for him to do it anyway.
I I think, Brad, if you would like to come up, I've got a couple of questions for you.
All right.
Mister Chairman, this goes back, I don't think we've had any problem the past week, because we've had Mr. LaFontaine's crew in and I've got a temporary kid here who's on break doing some miscellaneous stuff. But going back weeks to the first snowstorm that we had in January, um to my knowledge, none of this, none of the crew had been here. Um we came day after day after day to nothing having been shoveled, snow blown, nothing. Um the secretary herself had to shovel the ramps in order to open the doors. Um and this went on for weeks. We would place a call, um in fact, I I was standing right there on Thursday, saying, please, by Monday, can you do A, B, C, D? You've got Friday, Saturday, Sunday, but by Monday when we open, can you please get the walkway done, get the emergency exits done? Um and we would come Monday and they wouldn't be done. So, you know, as facility manager of the Longfellow Municipal Center of this building, and I'm listening to Chief Landry, you know, with his frustrations and issues that he's facing, um the oil delivery paths weren't done, the emergency exits to his building weren't done. Um as a facility manager, both the chief and I are responsible for the staff in our buildings. Um so when time and time again, the requests to clear snow went un-unaddressed, I felt there was nothing more that I could do other than reach out to the contractor myself. We, I texted Brian, I emailed Brian, and there were phone calls made to Brian. Chrissy specifically asked Brian, I believe, do you want Helen to find somebody? And his answer was no. It was on that Monday that I came in and nothing had been done that I had asked for since the Thursday before.
Right.
And nothing was done.
And I'm aware of all this.
From the very first snowstorm till this last one, nothing had been done. And you can, you can ask Mr. LaFontaine, because he did finally break out that whopper of a of a snow blower. And the paths that he had to to blow were were feet high.
The the only things that weren't touched, and actually, the only thing that I know of that wasn't touched was the front walkway um throughout the whole year and
So
But if Helen has to call him and hire him to do what is in this contract, then as far as I'm concerned, we're paying him twice for the same thing we have a contract for, and that's unacceptable.
All right, so Mr. LaFontaine, if if you, if you're aware, I mean, I know we gotta go over all the doorways and and walkways that need need done. Um cause in the past years, Jonathan's been doing them. Um so if we make you aware of all these issues that need to be addressed during during and after snowstorms, so that at the opening of the next business day, everything's safe for the, for the, you know, residents to come in and out of the town hall. You have the resources, equipment and manpower-wise, to address all this without having to do what we're doing right now? Going further?
We can get anything done that we need to get done. As far as the manpower, we have the manpower. The thing is that um when it comes to shoveling doors and all that, um okay, I got hired to do that. And that's what we're doing now. But before that, we weren't hired to do that. And I mean, I I listen to what Brian tells us to do and that's what we do, you know? As far as shoveling doors and uh snow blowing, you guys bought your own snow blowers, so you you have your own snow blowers, so we were gonna, we didn't need my super-duper snow blower anymore. And that's another thing that we spent fifteen thousand on just for the sidewalks here in this town, cause I didn't, I never
Are you gonna do the bridge?
Well, no, they do the bridge with their snow blowers. That's where the confusion is getting into a little bit. You bought snow blowers to do it.
Snow blower.
Why don't you add two?
Well, I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is if there's school in the morning, if there's school in the morning after a snowstorm, if the snowstorm ends early enough tonight, there's gonna be, there will be school tomorrow, so to speak, okay? As an example. So the bridge sidewalk needs to be done. This sidewalk needs to be done by night. Well, Brian and his crew don't have, is not enough manpower to do those sidewalks, these sidewalks, and maintain the fire and police sidewalks and doorways um for the opening of business. So if it's just foolish for the town hall to have to pay you to do it. Now, we know you can do it. So it should just be included in each storm that it all gets done. You you have a small storm, Brian's crew can wipe out everything, no problem. Then we don't need you, your assistance.
How do you keep somebody on the sideline when that man thinks he's gonna go out every snowstorm and then all of a sudden, you guys are doing it for four storms in a row and this guy's sitting home? Thinking, so when I do call him finally, he doesn't come out. Because he missed four storms already.
Right.
So what you're saying is, you wanna do all the little gravy storms and then we get a big monster storm. Brad, get out there, get that done tonight.
No, I want, I want, I want it to be clear today that Brad's gonna do the municipal buildings every storm? Or Brad's gonna do all the sidewalks every storm? And Brian's guys will do the municipal buildings. Don't really care who does what sidewalk and who does what door.
I believe we can sit down
So long as when the storm's done and
It's safe.
And the town hall opens and school opens, the kids can walk to the bus stop safe and the people can come in and out of the town halls.
They want, they want everything cleared, Brad.
Safe.
If we have two snow blowers out there, we have two. But you gotta plan on having it out there every storm. That's what they want.
Like for instance, the bridge. We understand there's two sidewalks on the bridge, one on each side. Pick a side. We know you can't get both, so you gotta, okay, we got one side. At least we don't have the kids, the people walking in the street. You got one side done, one's better than none. You had none done, you just did them. That's the point. So you got it, like for instance, the senior center.
We're not blaming you.
It's not a priority, it's something that you eventually you'll get to.
I I just, I'll do whatever I'm told to do.
No, I know.
If I'm, you know, the sidewalks haven't been a thing with me in the last the last three years, we haven't, I think we've done the sidewalks once. So it's not, it hasn't been in by uh
I think when it comes down to
I haven't
I think when it comes down to is Brian and yourself need to have a conversation on who's gonna do what. But like the chairman said, and I think the rest of the board agrees, just get it done. We don't care how you do it, but just get it done. You can't continue going this way and putting three lines of defense not being done. Because without that done, we're putting this town in jeopardy. I think that's the point that the board's making. So between you two guys, you'll figure it out, and the next storm, it'll be done right and we'll move forward and everybody will be happy.
I I believe two times the town hall was closed two days for the snow, because the town hall wasn't shoveled out yet. You know, and I I don't care whose fault it is, I don't wanna know whose fault it is. I'm just stating the facts that it can't happen.
Just get out that big red bird and start throwing snow.
It can't happen.
I mean, if you're telling me I need shovel people in the town, I'll I'll
No, no, I understand.
Every time, every time. I don't, I never had shovel people in town.
Ryan, I
That contract doesn't say, it says roadways and sidewalks. It doesn't say
Wait a minute.
I'm just saying
Jennifer, we don't have a facility
I'm in agreement.
Engineer here, we don't have janitors, we don't have anybody.
I'm in agreement, but we never had a shovel person through our contractor.
Well, we need to do it now.
So, and it says on there, as determined by the highways.
And walkways.
It says as
It says walkways.
As deter
It says sidewalks.
It says
But
Um, I know.
You're gonna start, you're gonna start in the.
No, but I'm saying, we can come to a mutual agreement here. And put it in.
Wait a minute, I'm just telling you right now, I'm not gonna get interrupted anymore. I'm telling you right now, the snow plowing, alright, I know in the past, it's never been an issue. We're having an issue this year. It doesn't matter, you call it a walkway, you call it a stairway, you call it a handicap ramp, you call it a sidewalk, call it whatever you want. It needs shoveled at the end of the storm for the next opening of school or and or business, period. End of story, I don't care what you wanna call it, the highway surveyor. All she's gonna do is say Brad, we're gonna do the ramp and the stairs as well. And Brad'll do it, I know Brad, I Brad, I worked with Brad for six years as a selectman. I I remember Brad snow plowing long before I was crazy enough to do this job, okay? And I know he'll, your father thought the world of him. I'll have Brad do it, he'll come right out, I know he will, boom, and Brad does it.
He just said he never had a shovel person, so we need to make an agreement here tonight that we can get that done. That's what I'm saying, I agree with you.
Well, you don't have to do that, Jennifer, that's Brian's job.
I believe he bought a snow blower at the request of your father.
But we need, we need.
Cause I can remember John talking about it.
So we need to make sure that we can come to the agreement, as as I said earlier. Along with a list from each each of our facilities managers or directors to say what they need done so that we can get it to them. So there's no question about what needs to be done.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, but he just said, he just said, I never had a shovel guy. So if they have to get out and shovel, he's gonna have to make sure that whoever does the town hall might have to get out of the truck and do some shoveling at whatever rate of pay. So we we need to put that in there.
I think the shoveling is very limited, I think most of the work requires a snow blower. And I think having spoken at length with Brad during the week, he's very knowledgeable and well aware of the areas that need to be done.
They know what to do, they know what their priorities are, we shouldn't have to tell them.
He did them for seven years without having a problem. In fact, he pointed out to me areas that should have been done, that weren't done, that I didn't even think about, so. He's well aware.
But I think too is when you stop, when you stop the exact, it gives accountability.
I think we should just stop right here, let Brian and Brad do their thing, do it, they know what they need to do, let them talk it out. And that's the end.
It just, it needs, it needs done because, you know, I, then I get phone calls from people, why is the town hall closed again? It snowed yesterday, well, you know.
Just to, just to get everything clear here, I only came because I heard somebody was gonna talk about snow plowing today, so I just came.
No, and I'm glad you did.
I wanna get it straight like everybody else does and Brian does too. That's the only reason why I showed up today, cause I heard there was gonna be talk about snow plowing.
Well, when I start hearing.
And I wanted to be here for it.
We gotta hire you to do something that you already hired and then we're gonna get an extra bill, I got a problem with that.
Let's, let's, let's put it this way here, when we put a a truck in here to do all them, it 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 comes out to the same thing that we just did. Only it's getting paid from different departments, whether a truck's in here plowing that that Brian's got out on the streets. Or I put a truck here, well now that truck on the street doesn't have to do it, so it takes the same amount of time. It just, we had to put an an extra truck in. But it would've taken the same amount of time, my other trucks would've just stayed out longer. So there was really no double cost aside of, okay, we cleaned up the sidewalks and stuff like that, you know? So we did spend a little time on that.
I have another question, Brian, how's your equipment holding up?
Um, we've had some incidences. With the older truck with wheels, we had a small incident with the sander just recently.
What was that?
The shaft got backed into a Jersey barrier down the salt shed, it's, you know, tight quarters down there and. The guy wasn't paying attention when he backed up and he bent the chute on the back.
Is it fixed now?
It's all fixed.
Everybody driving our trucks, do they have a DOT physical?
Um, everybody, I believe. I don't have that incident. Well, we 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 went round and round with this.
Well, it's, wait, let me explain something to you, cause it's a federal law.
I understand that.
Alright, cause I need it for my horse trailer, I need it for my work truck.
I sent, and I could go back in emails, but I sent the. Part time employees to get their DOT physicals.
Yeah.
I got an email that went back and forth between Helen and the chief, this goes back probably a year. And there was some question that they didn't need it as long as they stayed within the town parameters. And I think that came from the chief. That came from the chief, so they stayed within the town boundaries, they didn't need it. And that's that, that's why I sent, you know, Jonathan, he went and got his. The uh, uh, one of the employees we had who left, I had sent him for his. Because they go out of town to pick up coal packs, they go to Kimball to pick up material. Because they're driving outside the town.
Yeah, so they're covered.
Parameters. I made sure those were covered, right now, you know, I have a handful of town employees. That tell me they wanna go on the list that I have that I call. Yes, I do call the ones who more available twenty-four hours a day, but I, you know, I, hey, if they're on the books of the town. Come on down. I put you on the list, I'll call you sometime. You know, it might not be that frequent, but and many times I I go through the list. And people aren't available, or they're working, or they gotta go to work, or, so so you just keep going. Obviously Jonathan gets first, he he gets first and right now, we've been using. Bob LaFlemme a little bit, using a couple, one of the firemen a little bit. Couple of the past firemen have been in the seat this year. Uh, I had called on Deputy Chief Ferno a few mornings ago, cause he had told me he was gonna be available over the weekend. Little miscommunication, he had class that morning, but was ready to go in the afternoon, but we were already done. I, you know, I I I keep it open. To to town employees, cause it's it's tough. It's hard to fill one seat now, we're filling two, but we we're doing it and we're trying to keep the trucks rolling.
Okay. So, alright, so anyway, so Brad, you're you're able and willing to.
Whatever you want done, just gotta let me know, I can't.
No, he needs to let you know.
Right, exactly, he he needs to let me know what we gotta do and.
Is there a line item, I don't have the contract. Is there a line item in the contract that shows how much shovel is worth and a snow blower?
We don't have no shoveler in there, but we do have the um, the uh, the skid steer with the snow blower on it, yeah.
That item.
We do have that on there, but we don't have a shoveler in there, cause. I'll be honest with you, years ago, if I'd seen John out there shoveling, I I used to stop and get out and grab a shovel and shovel it with him. So that he wouldn't do it on his own. Cause he was pretty old and, you know, I didn't wanna see him. But that's the only time I used to shovel here, you know, was I'd see John out there. Jonathan used to do it most of the time, but like you said, he's in a truck. You know, so, you know, maybe because Jonathan's in a truck, we just, they get overlooked or whatever, I don't know, but. I've never been, I don't have a shoveler in there, but we can put one, you know?
My only other concern I have, and it's not really a. I know the snow blower went in this year in the contract at a six hour minimum. Do we think we're gonna be using it six hours to do everything that we have?
Probably be over.
Not, not, I understand why, because he owns the use of equipment and we haven't used it, but I just.
Well, it's like you said, you'll work, you'll work it out.
We will.
You'll work it out. I wanna thank you for coming in.
I mean, but Helen, you have, you, Brad, you gave Helen the cost of the shoveler though and.
I did not.
It's the same, I mean, it's, I don't have a separate contract, we're working on the same contract.
You know, I don't even, you know, I didn't even do a bill up for anything that we've done around here or anything and, you know, I just. I I just want it all to work, I'm not looking to.
No, I I understand.
So as far as that goes, you know, I just haven't done anything.
Our concern is to.
Get it straightened out.
Our main concern is to make it safe.
I believe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that we can sit down in the next day or two before the next storm and have it straightened out.
Figure it out, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, another thing that happens sometimes and and we get the storms like we've had recently in the past. And that snow comes down overnight, two and three inches an hour. And you're battling and you can't see from me to you in the truck and you're battling the streets and trying to keep the main roads open. And three hours will actually go by and that's nine inches of snow and that's why the the cops call sometimes because. You're in a battle, you know, it's like, you know, and then, yeah, okay, so we send a truck here right away when the cops do call. But sometimes it it gets overlooked for that reason, that we're just in a battle, it's 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 a battle out here, you know?
The first line of defense gets a little precedence because the fire.
I understand that, yeah.
Is number one.
But again, like like the chief said, it's not his job to to call us, but. And 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 sometimes it takes that call for me to say, okay, cause I might be up Chestnut Hill somewhere and I didn't see the the thing. And sometimes if if the police officer around. Courtesy call, we send somebody right here as soon as we're called, every time. So sometimes if it's a pretty heavy storm that if they do call, I mean, it's kind of like a courtesy thing to us too. And we can get in here right away and, you know, it's not done intentionally.
I never took those phone calls as complaints, I got I got them as they could down here, clean it up and we're all good.
But we don't want it to happen all the time where they have to call us either, you know, and we're not.
Correct.
Gonna get into that, but if it, if we're in a big storm, sometimes it comes down awful fast. And and a guy'll say, I was just there an hour ago and you go there and there's six inches of snow, I mean, he probably was with the wind blowing and everything else sometimes. It goes up quick, so you don't realize how fast.
So I mean, so the skid steer would be a six hour minimum. And not to tell anybody how to, you know, manage the the time on it, but if it's if it's a storm that that doesn't. You know, you're probably only gonna utilize it four hours, maybe if that skid steer is is big enough. Maybe they could maintain this, the police department.
Well, the reason.
Access road. And then you can leave the bigger trucks out on the road.
Well, when we come in here, we usually get around all the handicap parking and all around and we try to get that whole walkway cleared out where, if you're shoveling it. Sometimes the shovel puts it against the wall, but we try to take all that stuff right out of there and I've never, I've never taken that down here to do sidewalks. And eight hours, you can't usually get them all done, whatever you're trying to do. And a lot of times we have to come back the next day, you know, depends on what you want done, but. So six hour minimum, I mean, I can work around that, if you just wanna get certain sidewalks done, we can, we can, we can work around that. It's just that we were getting called out only on a big storm, so in turn, you know, we we put a six hour minimum on that. Because we gotta, you know, it's, we're not used to using this, so now we gotta get it on a trailer. And we gotta get the trailer hooked up to a truck and bring the truck and trailer down here and then same thing when we go back and you only use it once a year. You wanna do that for two hours?
No, no, I know, I understand.
So that's why we put a six hour minimum in there on that, there's a lot of work involved.
So, I mean, we don't have an issue with equipment, we don't have an issue with manpower, it's just the uh, the communication. So if we can straighten out the communication, then the issues should go away.
Yep.
Just a point of clarification, Helen, this all gets charged to the same line item regardless, it's snow, it's snow and ice.
Right, so it just, that's all, it just doesn't make sense to have Brad have to answer to two people to get, to to get one goal done.
No, but unfortunately, we were in a situation where it wasn't getting done otherwise.
No, I know, and I understand.
I felt I did not have any other choice.
Understood, but that's why we we wanted to meet tonight and so hopefully this resolves the the issue.
I think it, pardon the interruption, I I think for the municipal center, the police and town government buildings, we need some consistency.
Yeah.
Whether it's maybe the same staff members who address it every time. Because we we haven't certainly had the snowfall in the past couple of years that we've had this year, so that could be part of the issue. But I know even the past couple of years, when the staff members changed, one would forget one thing, they didn't know about another. So I think if there's some consistency with the individual and they're very familiar with what they're doing and what they need to do, I don't think we'll have any issues going.
I think Brad manages his people that way anyway, it seems like the same two pickup trucks on my street for the last five years. So, which makes sense.
We've done that, you know, we tried to keep the same people in all the time in the same section. And that's, that's one of the things we try to do, so the guy knows what he's doing, we have one guy in Alfonso that just does Alfonso. We have two guys on the upper end, two guys on the lower end of Chestnut Hill, you know, so. We definitely try to keep the same people and.
Yeah, so I I don't think.
Works out pretty good.
I think so, I, I think like Helen's saying, I think that's what she's getting at.
The guys that came in this week were phenomenal, or last week, I guess it was, they did everything and and that's um, place looks much better.
Okay, good, alright, so.
And my eyes are so red, not not because I'm crying, it's. I caught a Walden's flash or something today, so.
Oh, you got sand, the sand.
Yeah, so. I'm gonna go home and go to bed.
So going here forward, just for clarification that we're gonna work this out and we will be back in here maintaining these lots. The police, fire, senior center, all the directors will, if they have concerns or questions, I urge them to pick up the phone and call me.
Yep.
I've stressed it before, if you have an immediate concern or you need an answer or you wanna let me know about something that needs attention. The telephone is the way to go.
Yep.
I can't stress it enough.
And I'm just curious, Brian, when we called you on a Thursday and asked to have the facility cleared by Monday, is there any particular reason why it wasn't done in that period?
You'd have to pinpoint the time and date and I'd have to back everything, I don't reckon, I don't remember that happening.
I think what we need to do.
I I I just, I don't know what the timing date was, the storm. I I know I got a phone call on a Friday, somebody had a hard time getting in here on a Friday and I was, well. I didn't realize someone was gonna be in the building. You know, and when I left on a Thursday afternoon handing in bills, it was clear.
Well, a lot of, a lot of Fridays though, Lisa and and Helen are here, you know? They, Lisa and Helen and and Marcia all were almost five days a week.
So you want, you you, you know, even on the the weekends, you wanna prioritize all these doors at all, at all times?
Well, Saturday, Sunday during a storm, the main door for this building, I would say, would be the Mima door. But before the opening of business, you know, all the doors.
Right, and that's how I would address a Friday, I mean, the town, they're closed, that's why, you know, not knowing.
I don't know, so maybe there's handicap ramp.
Well, I'm just, I I wanna.
And the Mima door.
We're we're gonna work this out, but I just wanna clarify.
Yeah.
What kinda time and effort, you know?
Cause Monday through Friday, and then sure, some committees actually will come in during.
I know, I come in here on the weekend.
Yeah.
I mean, it's best time to.
Yeah.
Do work because you don't get.
Exactly.
Three thousand questions.
Right, so uh, uh, so I mean, you know what the needs are of the town, so, and. So if you and Brad just communicate all the, you know, who's gonna do what and that's it, and I know it'll happen. Thank you. Alright.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I got, I under members form, I like to bring something up.
Sure.
A while back, we had a gentleman here looking to get a license. Next to the the men's club. He had a.
Oh, Mark.
Marks.
Mark's auto.
Right, Mark Fernandez. Right, he never got his license, right, right? Why's it got fifteen cars in there? And half of them aren't even registered, can somebody look into that?
I drove by the other day and I noticed the same thing and I thought that falls onto the preview of our building inspector.
Well, I I wanna bring it in front of the board. I just didn't wanna, you know.
I didn't know how long our building inspector's gonna be with us.
Right, well, technically, if the, if if the business is no, if the property is no longer a business, then he's only allowed one unregistered vehicle. Right, it's basically a residence now.
So what I'm saying is.
There is a lot.
I know there is.
He hasn't stopped doing what he was doing, he just kind of put blind, he just, he does whatever he wants, so I'm bringing it in front of the board to find out.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
You wanna come up here?
Too much knowledge about this, I did speak to Lucio Fernandez a month ago.
Okay.
He's on the impression he has one license that allows him to do some things and the other license doesn't.
When, we never signed.
Come about.
We never signed his. Yeah.
He's still working there, is it the license to maintain the cars or?
Okay, my my next question to you is.
Yeah, he can do that, he has one license to repair cars, so I think he thinks those vehicles fall under that license. But the other license was not getting received. but the other license we're not getting received.
To sell used cars.
To sell used cars.
But does that mean his license that he's, he has right now, that means he can have all those unregistered?
I, I have no idea about that.
That's what I'm asking.
I'm just saying, when I did speak to all the cars.
I think that's what the whole issue was.
Not if it's repair, though.
He said he has one license.
Did we sign anything in December on him?
They, they don't need a license for auto body, it's just a business certificate, and that was pre the-
Well, I'd like to-
And that's the way, business is given, which allows him-
Yep.
To do that.
And that was grandfathered in, the planning board met and discussed that, he can do that, it was the class two license, which is the sale of used automov- automobiles, and he cannot.
Right.
He cannot do that.
I was just wondering if he's allowed to have that many unregistered vehicles.
Cause isn't Zeno's limited to the amount of vehicles?
Yep.
Unregistered on the lot.
On property, isn't it?
On property.
And how many unregistered?
Unregistered, I mean-
That would be a question for the planning boards, it would have to be by special permits.
Cause I thought when Mr. Zeno came here, that for his certificate, there was, he, he could only have certain amount of vehicles, um, on the lot.
He doesn't have a class two, though.
No, he's got the repair, which is the same as-
But that doesn't come before the board.
He was here for some-
He was here, cause his neighbors behind him came in.
Yeah.
Vouched for him.
Yeah, cause his neighbors came in and vouched for him for hearing.
Right, and then that, that class two certificate was revoked.
But I remember him-
There's gotta be some guidelines.
Yeah, there, there's gotta be something like this. I remember talking about it, and I, I don't know, so that's a question for the planning board.
Planning board.
To, uh-
Mr. Larois is absolutely correct, it looks like a junkyard, I think.
It does.
And I pity, and I pity the poor guy behind-
Everything's covered in white snow.
Yeah, but it's terrible.
Yeah, but the poor guy behind him has always had an issue with him.
Yeah.
I feel bad for the guy, but the thing is, is we can't continue letting this guy do whatever he feels like doing, I mean, so that's why I'm bringing it up in front of the board, if there is a violation.
Okay, we'll check with the planning board on that, to see if they have anything specific for their property.
That's all I have.
Is there, is there, um, if there isn't, is there something that we can do as a bylaw to look into for May? I mean-
That'd be a question for the planning board too.
Not, not that, not that it's gonna solve the ones that are sitting there, but at least it can go, going forward. Especially, we just got, you know, zone businesses and things of that sort, you might run into this problem a lot.
There was another guy down in, uh, I don't know which street it is, by the elementary school.
Yep.
He's probably got fifteen trucks, ten wheels, everything in his yard, and he's wondering if we got a business over there, and, and-
No Street.
That, yeah, I don't, I don't-
No, I, I-
Now, but I just talked-
Where does that, where does that stand?
The building commissioner is aware of that.
I just talked to the building commissioner about that last Wednesday night, and, um, there's, there's nothing, he's been there since the seventies.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean it's right. Okay, whatever, I'm just-
That's all he said.
I think if you talk to the neighbors, they might be able to shed some light on, and, and, and regards to land, and what used to be there, and what is there, and, and things of that sort, but, um, that is, then again, asking the neighbors information to come forth, um.
But the building commissioner went and talked to him, and he said he didn't have an issue with the gentleman.
But it's something we need to, especially now that we have our business areas.
But anyway, so that was his first meeting with him, that there could be more to come, you know, so he's looking into that right now, anyway.
That's why I brought this one up over here, because I just think it looks like a junkyard, the poor guy behind him has come in front of the board and complained about
Yep.
How bad it is, and, uh, it looks like he's going back to his old ways again, I just, I, I just can't see it just go away, I, I think we should do something, that's why I brought it up.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one quick thing that I overlooked earlier.
Yep.
And that is, uh, several, maybe weeks now, no, MMA sent out a legislative package
Yep.
That the towns might be interested in following. One of them is veterans payment, there, there's a, a house, uh, bill, uh, to shift payment, uh, to veterans. Instead of the town paying directly, the Commonwealth will pay directly. But that, but it's probably of interest to Mr. Barber. But marketing prioritization, uh, development of sites, we, we, we're talking about, um, economic development in the town, and the state is looking to create a searchable, uh, database for developable land in vacant sites, and they will list them at their cost. And that probably something that the planning board, uh, might follow up on, uh, if you wanted to, you know, get some recognition for what we might have available. Another thing is the, there's another MMA bill, uh, to provide funding or other opportunities for such technical assistance to municipalities or regions to maximize opportunities for economic development, planning, and growth. Um, and they're gonna, trying to fashion this around the, the green communities program as well, the way that works. So I think it'd be well, uh, well worthwhile to talk to our rep and senator at some point collectively on these, uh, development points. Say one more? That's it, thank you.
You're welcome. So, next we have public forum, the final public. Alright, so our, our next regular meeting is March second at seven PM, but we'll have a six thirty meeting, uh, with the building, uh, committee, so at six thirty.
And Mr. Chairman, we did have-
Anybody would like to attend.
Initially, the six thirty meeting tonight to discuss priorities, I do think we have some other priorities that need to be addressed, did you wanna schedule another meeting to address those? Financial, uh, they were more budgetary and items for the budget.
Yeah, and I thought the fire contract we were supposed to meet to, that wasn't on this. We brought it up at our last meeting.
I haven't, I need to, I haven't even been able to get in touch with, we have a new agent, and he hasn't returned my phone call, so I'm kinda just holding off on that until I hear from him.
Okay.
To see if he's got a proposal, um, coming here, or if the board's gonna-
Unless we, uh, on March second, would it be possible to meet at six?
I'm here, it's kind of me.
We're already here at six thirty.
And half of the building committee is finance committee.
True, you do six?
Yeah. Alright, six on March second.
Are we good with the planning board going forward?
Um, they will likely be on at seven, but I'll check with the secretary to see if that's still required, I know they made some headway, I think, with the issue that they were having, so.
Oh, okay. Alright, so next we'll have, um, signatures, we'll do our signatures, and then we'll adjourn immediately following.
Do you have a spare keyboard or anything?
We might've had one a long time ago, it's hanging back there, but-
Mr. Chairman? We still have a spare keyboard? In the file cabinet? I'll look when I-
Mr. Chairman, mission, uh, oh shit, we'll have to adjourn.
I'll second that. All of them? Aye.
Listen, how are you, Joe?
I'll look when I get one.